Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.
Let's go.
That's good.
Record in progress.
Good evening. Calling the Town Council Committee, the whole special meeting agenda to order for April 4th, 2024. And for roll call, all are present except for Counselor Merritt and Counselor Bordalyn is on Zoom. I am going to make a reminder that the budget rule is one rounds of speaking per motion. All right, on to new business, 2024-247-1.
Madam Mayor, I would like to put it on the floor on reconsideration.
All right, a reconsideration, which account?
This is going to be in the City of Groton Police Department account 1090. And it's in their capital improvements, CIP portion.
Do you have a page for that, please?
61 is the capital improvements and then the regular account page is 10.
Madam Mayor, I will have to recuse myself from that.
Okay, thank you.
Page 61.
Okay, we will have to do a vote and we need two-thirds, which will be six councilors. So we will start.
61?
1090, so the motion is to reconsider. And Counselor Gajewski.
Aye.
Counselor McBride.
Just for clarification, this is just to vote whether or not we reconsider this item?
Yes, just to reconsider this one item.
Yes, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Yes.
I am an aye, Counselor Rusk.
Aye.
Counselor Pacino.
Aye.
Counselor Bordalyn.
Uh, what are we moving on?
We are reconsidering account number 1090, the City of Groton Police Department.
Um, I just want clarification, why are we reconsidering everything?
Um, that hasn't been stated yet, it's just on the floor to reconsider, we're just going to vote if we would like to reconsider this or not.
I think it should be why are we putting them on first before we throw a motion down.
We are in a mill of vote, would you like to vote, yes or no?
No, I guess I think in the future there should be an explanation as to what we're doing before we just throw motions down, so I'll abstain.
Well noted, thank you. Okay, that has six votes, six to zero to one, reconsideration is open. Counselor Jones.
So my motion would be to reconsider out of City of Groton 1090, one of the police cars in FYE 2025 for $25,000 to reduce the $150,000 to $125,000 equipment.
All right, so I think we pass this as a whole number, so you need to...
Take it out of that number? So I have a number of $3,057,688.
And Mayor Hendrick is here, would you like to come to the table? Would you like to speak on your matter?
Um, we discussed this at the previous council, council meeting, I feel we're just looking for some cuts and we need to have, they are getting car replacements, I believe it's one, two, three, three cars, and I think they can move one car into the following years if they need to, but just feel it would be fair to make reduction.
Point of information.
Your point of information.
Um, this also seems very planned since the city mayor is here and I just don't think we were properly noticed that this was part of the plan, so I'm a little confused. And then there was no prelude into this, you just threw a motion down, but the city mayor is here, I don't think it's fair to make people have to reconsider this, like what's going on? Was there a meeting that I missed, or?
I was in no meeting.
So how did this all get arranged?
This was second on Counselor Jones's motion.
There's a second, so Counselor Jones put down.
We have no prelude as to how this happened at all, just...
This was seconded by Gajewski. This was moved by Jones, seconded by Gajewski.
Uh, question to the town manager, how did this happen?
I have no information.
I can answer.
Counselor Jones, would you like to, Counselor Jones is going to answer.
Um, I felt...
This is a little strange.
I felt this morning, looking at the budget, looking at what we have done over the last couple of days, that we needed to make some extra cuts to show just good sensible work on the budget, we called around to different councilors and talked to them and got a consensus, so.
Yeah, I just don't think that's fair equitable, I'm a little shocked by this process. So would every councilor have a chance to reconsider, so tomorrow if I want to reconsider the budget line, will I get the same accommodation?
Counselor Bordalyn, is this your time you're using?
No, I'm trying to understand what we're doing since we weren't really notified.
Your point of information has been answered.
Thank you, next time I think it should be properly noticed.
Well, there was no notice.
That's the other problem.
Counselors are free to make amendments, ask for reconsiderations, they are welcome to contact the city mayor, they are welcome to make phone calls. Mayor Hendrick, do you have anything you would like to say on the matter?
Well, first of all, if you make a $25,000 cut, the town council can't write out a cut, right? You can say I'm going to cut $25,000, here's my intent, but I as the mayor have the budget and once the budget's approved, then I will, you know, spend the money as need be, right?
Understood.
So there is...
I'm having trouble hearing if the mic can come closer, please.
Is this any better? Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
Thank you. So, uh, we need these vehicles and so I am probably going to fund these vehicles. The question is, what do I do with the loss of that $25,000? And it may come out of overtime, it may come out of another line item budget, I don't, I want to be careful in overtime because I don't want to cut police services in the city. We also have the option where I could, um, pass the increase on to the city residents as an increase in city taxes and I really don't want to do that either. We did ask for a vehicle a couple of years ago, two or three years ago, that vehicle was cut, I understand the concern that we have about trying to cut the budgets, I'm also a town taxpayer and I am concerned about the tax rates, but overall concerned about balancing the, the budget on the backs of the city and other departments when, if you look at my overall budget of my, of what we're asking for, it is less than the increase of the largest department that you add. And so, overall, we're asking for 4% of the budget and we do provide 37% of the taxpayers. I recognize that the, that you as a council need to make cuts and if this is where we need to make a cut, then I'll accept the cut for 25,000, I don't have to like it, but I will accept it and we'll figure out how we're going to manage it on the city side. And that's really all I have to say. Although, one last thing, our vehicle expense this year for maintenance is expected to go over $50,000 just in repairs, so, and with that, I yield the floor.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, we will, do you have a question?
I was just going to say I'm supporting this because this was one of the original things I thought we should have done last Thursday, and I understand the mayor's position, but I think based upon the review of the plan, three would seem to be a little, I don't want to say extreme, but I think, I think two a year can build up that plan and get where they need to be, so I'm in support of the reconsideration.
Thank you. All right, we will, we will vote on the matter. Counselor Gajewski?
Aye.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Rusk?
Yes.
Counselor Pacino?
Yes.
Counselor Bordalyn?
Just clarify that the motion on the floor, please.
Um, it is the cut of one vehicle of $25,000 from the police budget.
No.
Well, it is, I'm, excuse me, my terminology is incorrect, it is a reduction of 25,000 from their budget for the police department, excuse my...
No, as I said before, I do not support this, I think this is a blind side.
Are you abstaining?
I'm voting no.
Okay.
To cutting anything.
All right, that passes six to, to one to zero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, thank you, counselors, and good luck with the rest of your deliberation and I know you have a heavy lift ahead of you and I do honestly wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
With your deliberations because we're getting ready to start hours on Monday and it's going to be interesting to see where we go as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a second reconsideration to put on the floor.
The reconsideration number?
Uh, 1091, it's in the highway maintenance cost center one.
What page are you on?
Uh, 183 and 184.
This is Groton Long Point?
Yes.
For reconsideration, the vote is to reconsider. Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Gajewski?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Jones, I'm so sorry, you have the motion, who seconded it?
Uh, second, Gajewski.
Thank you. And I have Parker as a yes and Gajewski as a yes. McBride?
I'm in favor of reconsidering, but I'm concerned over why the mayor was here for the prior reconsideration, but Groton Long Point isn't here for this consideration, so I'm going to abstain.
Yes.
Rusk?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Counselor Bordalyn, would you like to reconsider account number 1091?
Are the folks here?
Uh, not at this time.
Okay, so if people weren't notified, I'm a not in support, so that's a no.
Six to two to zero, you do not have the floor, thank you. That is a six to two to four, that is up for reconsideration.
Six to 101, Counselor McBride abstained.
Oh, you abstained, Counselor McBride, I apologize.
That's all right, thank you.
Six to one to one then, thank you for correcting me. That is up for reconsideration, account number is 1091 and what, what motion do you have?
So the motion is to remove the stormwater systems analysis and improvements for 100...
Point of information?
Yes.
We cannot be specific, we can only, I'm, correct, you can only be, put down the dollar amount, not where it can come from.
CIP?
You can make suggestions.
You make suggestions, yes, you can dictate.
Yes, but he will move the number as a whole, is this similar to the city's police budget? So what is your number that you are removing?
Um, instead of 416 is 266, I mean 266,000.
Remove, removing?
Removing 150,000.
All right, now, would you like to, um, you moved it, who seconded it? Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Pacino, would you like to discuss that?
Um, I felt at this time, this is for, my intent was for the stormwater systems analysis, however they use it is, I understand is up to them, felt that this is something that could be done in the future years, it doesn't need to be done this year and it would help with our budget.
Okay, what is the reduction total?
The reduction total is 266,000, so 150,000 is the amount.
150.
150.
Is the reduction, it's 150.
And that was a line item 10911, that's where it came out of.
Okay, do we have any discussion? Counselor McBride?
I would like to make an amendment to that reconsideration, I did give some thought to this last week and I thought that this could be discussed with them and that it's possible it could be done over a two-year plan and I think it would be more appropriate to give them half of that, $75,000, to have them receive the second half in the following year, so I would like to make an amendment.
Okay, your number?
It would be 266 plus 75 would be 341, which would still save the 75,000 from the budget.
I'll second that motion. All right, moved by McBride, seconded by Rusk.
Point of information?
Your point of information?
75 this year and possibly 75 next year, will it still add up, the, the cost of the service still add up to 150 or will next year be 100?
I, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm, I'm sure they could figure it out, I mean, it would just, because I, I've had discussions with them on this plan and I was planning on potentially putting this forth at the meeting, I decided not to for numerous reasons, so they, my understanding is they could do it over a two-year plan, so I think it's feasible that they could accomplish their goals in two years.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the, the number?
341, 341,000.
That's the total, so what's the reduction?
75.
I just wanted to be clear, okay.
Um, I'm completely fine with Counselor McBride's suggestion of spreading this out over two years, it makes a nice, it makes a significant reduction in the budget and is a reasonable way for them to start to move forward with their resiliency plan, so I'm comfortable with it.
All right, Counselor Bordalyn?
Thanks, my hand was up for a while, I cannot support this, the people aren't even around the table, and also, John, can you move the camera so I can see the timer, please, or somebody? Um, you know, I think the blind side looks really bad, if you want to make the cuts, we should have did it when we had them in front of us, not come before us and then say, oh, you know, sorry, we're going to reel that back a day, a day or two later, just don't think it's good governance, good justice, it's not fiscally responsible, so I'm just not in agreement with this process, it just looks bad, so I will not be supporting any number to modify at all because I feel the folks should be able to be here and be a part, uh, Town Manager Burt, if you can go back left, it's too far right now. Um, you know, be here to speak to where and what those cuts are going to do to them, um, I think that's really important and not giving them a chance to is unjust because they were invited on a night and that time has passed and, uh, you know, now they can't even speak to it, so we kind of, I feel like we wasted their time, thank you. And again, not sure where the memo was for this, and it wasn't put out in a deliberate fashion, but, um, it's very interesting, thank you.
Counselor Rusk?
I am 100% agree that I would love to give everybody all the money that they want, but I also know that we are in a really tough fiscal time and I look at how many residents can afford to pay their bills this year and increasing their mill rate by as much as 1.9% is not fiscally responsible, I think we are all trying to dig deep and see where we can make cuts, I 100% appreciate Counselor McBride's, you know, middle of the road, let's, let's fund half of this and get them on their way and see, you know, do it again next year and finalize it. Again, I would love to, to give everybody everything that they want, I'm hoping that this can be something that is acceptable to Groton Long Point and that they're okay with that, either way, I think it is what is fiscally responsible for our residents in Groton and trying to hold down taxes as much as possible this year, thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Parker?
Yes, um, Mr. Burt or Madam Mayor, do we know, did we contact them to tell them that this was happening?
I didn't contact Mayor Hendrick either, I didn't kind of, I wasn't involved, I wasn't involved in this. That's my question, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I would like to echo the comments of my colleague Counselor McBride in saying how he was looking to do this a couple of weeks ago, but for various reasons he did not, and although it is a reconsideration, I mean, we can reconsider anything at any time, we could do it right now, I could reconsider anything we've done in the past, so, um, with no notice or not, so, um, but I think Counselor McBride's amendment is a middle road approach and it's an unfortunate necessary one just because of the increases we are seeing across the town and we have a lot of hard decisions to make, so, um, thank you to my fellow counselors for putting this on the floor.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see any more hands, so we'll start a vote on 341,000 for account number 1091, which is Groton Long Point. And we will start with Counselor Parker.
Yes.
Counselor Gajewski?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
I am also a yes, Counselor Rusk?
Yes.
Counselor Pacino?
Yes.
Counselor Bordalyn?
Abstained.
That passes seven to zero to one.
Point of information?
Your point of information.
Is the first motion mute at this point?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be rescinded?
No, it's fine, nope.
Madam Mayor, I have a reconsideration to put on the floor.
Okay, a reconsideration. Account number?
It is second, it is account number 10848 Mystic River Ambulance.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 178.
Okay, this is for reconsideration, Counselor Jones has made a motion, I need a second?
Second.
Second for Counselor Gajewski. Okay, would you like to, all right, let's vote on a reconsideration unless you want to, you have something else to say?
No.
Okay. Counselor Parker? Counselor Gajewski?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Rusk?
Yes.
Counselor Pacino?
Yes.
Counselor Bordalyn?
No.
I'm a yes, that passes seven to one to zero. Change my page now. All right, so it's function 10848, and your number?
$75,000.
$75,000 was already voted on at your previous meeting and it had a resolution of the...
We voted 85,000.
Fail.
Let me, let me...
You voted 85,000 and, and you also voted 75,000, 75,000 resulted in a 4-4 fail.
Mm-hmm, can't be reconsidered. We have a 75,000 and then we had an 85 that passed, so 75 cannot be put on the floor, would you?
76,000?
It's...
For, no?
No.
It's frivolous.
Frivolous.
Excuse me, I can make the judgment on frivolous, so I'm going to let 76... Excuse me. I can make the judgment on frivolous, so I'm going to let 76 stand.
I will appeal to the chair?
You have every right to appeal the chair.
I don't think the amount of going up 1,000 is correct. I believe it's called a frivolous vote, and I can reconsider a different amount. But going up 1,000 is too close to the 75.
So I have an appeal of the chair. I do not bring my proper book with me tonight. No, the little red book. Do we have, what does it need? Does it need a second? Or does it, what is, is it pass my majority? That'll be just a moment.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, right here.
Thank you. Okay.
It is, oh, actually, I'll just, it is the second line detail on the bottom section.
Put on the chair. It needs a second. Do we have a second?
Second, Gieske.
It is debatable. And we need a majority vote. And it can be reconsidered. All right, so what you're voting on, if it is in the affirmative and you vote aye, then you are saying 76 is not, is a frivolous motion, and you're appealing my decision on that. And if you say no, then you will let 76 stand, and we can move forward. Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Counselor Gieske?
Aye.
Counselor McBride?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
What is the aye?
It means that the 76 cannot stand. It is frivolous motion.
No.
And you're appealing my chair, my decision. Counselor Rusk?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Boardland?
Abstain.
Point of information?
Yes.
Would be a number that's not frivolous.
That passes five to two to one, the appeal of the chair.
80,000?
Second, if you put
80,000.
Second.
10848 for 80,000. Moved by Jones, seconded by Gieske.
Point of information, I just didn't hear the number.
80,000 for count 10848 on page 178.
Wasn't that a motion I put on the other night by mistake?
I don't believe there was a second. There was no second. There was no second. 80,000 was something you put on the floor, and it did not receive a second. And that's what I have written in my notes. Any comments?
I have my hand up.
Counselor Boardland?
Again, I'm extremely concerned about this. As I stated last night, they asked for a modest increase. And in 2022, they asked for a very modest increase during COVID. And the Groton ambulance went from 105,000 to 341,000 in one year. And then they came back down to 300,000, which was still almost over $200,000 increase. Yet, you didn't want to cut that. I just don't think it's fair. I did send Counselor Gieske the numbers for the Groton ambulance, and they didn't come in at a level budget. They didn't go back to their pre-COVID budget. Their budget was 105,000. So I just don't think it's fair to unevenly distribute this. And I think that the Mystic ambulance has come in at a fair rate consecutively. So I'm not in support of decreasing any of their requests. Their requested amount, again, was what?
It's on page 178 in your book.
I'm just asking you to state it for the record. What was the number?
Their request was 85,000.
Right. So I just don't, I mean, there's places where you can cut. You don't want to cut safety, medical, schools, you know, that's my opinion. There's other areas that you can cut. I just don't think this is fair. Thank you.
I don't see any more hands.
Madam Mayor, sorry, I had my hand with the
Thank you, Counselor Gieske.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, actually, I want to play. I did look at, as Counselor Boardland said, she did send me the numbers for Groton ambulance, but they had taken a decrease since then, and it was for COVID. I am not opposed to reconsidering the Groton ambulance number for when we increased them for COVID and to bring that back down. But that motion's not on the floor, and it's reconsideration. Actually, it's out of order now, I think about it. So I'm going to stop talking about it, but I'll be in favor of this motion on the floor.
All right, I don't see any more hands. We'll take a vote on account number 10848 for $80,000. Counselor Parker?
Aye.
Counselor Gieske?
Aye.
Counselor McBride?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Franco, Counselor Rusk?
Aye.
Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Boardland?
No.
That passes seven to one to zero. Got any more?
I'm done.
All right, Counselor McBride?
Yes, thank you. I would like to make a move to reconsider account number 10901, Highway Maintenance, City of Groton. Do I provide a number, or do I?
First, we're going to do reconsideration.
Reconsideration for
So what page do you have that on?
Page 181, Highway Maintenance, City of Groton.
All right, this is for reconsideration of account 10901, moved by McBride. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Gieske. Okay. Do you want to speak at all on it?
Certainly.
This is just for reconsideration. If you want to give a little synopsis of where you're going, you don't have to yet. We can, it's up to you.
I think it's in the same light of reconsideration of another highway budget that we looked at. I think it's proper that we reconsider this one, and I can get into more details if it passes.
Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Gieske?
Aye.
Counselor McBride?
Aye.
Counselor Jones?
Aye.
Counselor Rusk?
No.
Counselor Pacino?
Aye.
Counselor Boardland?
Aye.
I am an aye. That passes six to two to zero. We are open for reconsideration. Count number 10901. And your number? Sorry, can you repeat that? It is 2911628. Hold on one second, let me just look at it. That number
I apologize. Can I amend that number? I was originally taking 50. I only want to take 25.
All right, I'm going to erase that number. I'm going to start over again with your number. Okay, your number. I'm ready when you are.
Wait one second. 2936628.
Can we repeat one more time? Point of information, how much is it?
25,000.
Okay, that number has not been put up yet. Okay, so I have that number on the floor by Counselor McBride. Do we have a second?
Second.
From Jones. Counselor McBride, would you like to discuss?
Certainly. On page 52 of Appendix A, there's the Shore Ave Jupiter Point Storm Water Drainage Engineering Study, and the amount of 50,000. And my theory is the same theory we utilized for the Groton Long Point Evaluation Study, was my thought was to split that cost into two years, to fund them 20, half of that for this year for 25,000, but to reduce to $25,000 and to give it to them next year, which saves us some tax dollars this year, but still provides them a plan to move forward with the evaluation study of that storm water next year.
Point of information? This is only a suggestion, not where you're telling them to take it out.
Right, that's my, that's my reasoning.
Madam Mayor, I can't answer. Is that correct, Madam Mayor? I'm sorry, your point of information?
Is, Dory, we're not, we're making a suggestion. We're only talking about the bottom line, what we're taking out.
Right, he is passing, he's putting a number on the floor, a total number for that department, and he is
Where it can come from, right?
But he can say where he would be making the cuts as of what his logical reasoning is. We are welcome to say why we would be making the cut. I mean, it's up to them how they actually make the cut. Okay. If this passes. It was, it has been stated, but Counselor McBride, you still have the floor, I'm sorry?
No, I'm finished. That's all. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Point of information, I'm trying to find where that is.
Page 52.
Section A. Page 52, unless
Little time? You found it?
Oh, I found it, but there's another
You have a point of information. I just wanted to make sure that you found it. Do you, would you like to speak now? Would you like to speak now? Okay, Pacino, you have the floor.
On page 183, in the Cost Center, it says there's 100, FY '25 request includes CIP Storm Water Systems and Improvements for 150. And we're talking about 50. Where's the other 100?
You're in City, page 180.
You're on Groton Long Point.
Aye, 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 okay. That's where I should be.
No, we're on Groton, City of Groton.
No, goodness.
Sorry.
Oh, goodness. Okay. I resent my question.
Would anybody else like to speak?
I have my hand up.
I'm sorry, Counselor Boardland?
Thank you. Again, no one's here to speak about it. I think it's interesting that, you know, select ones, we got a lot of support for, and others we don't. It should be evenly distributed. I mean, again, I agree, if you're going to reconsider, we should reconsider all, every line that we voted on, not just select handpicked ones. So I do have concerns, as I stated before. I just don't feel like it's equitable or fair, in my opinion. I don't think it's fair to come back to the table now. I think we should have pressed forward with the budget if we wanted to reconsider at the end. That might have been fair, and we can have invited the folks at that time. That's much more deliberate, open, transparent, I think, to nitpick. If you knew that you wanted to make cuts, then we should have came with the, you know, ready to fire on that from day one, in my opinion. And I think it allows the people who are presenting, we just wasted their time. So it's interesting. I'm very torn on this process, and in fact, that some are in favor on some and not on others. You know, it is very important that we are equitable and fair across the board. And I think if we're going to reconsider, we should open up each object code and at least give a chance for the number to be thrown on the floor to be considered. Is that something we could do tonight?
If you would like to bring something back that you, we have decided, you also can do a reconsideration.
Right. Again, as I stated, I wouldn't do it blindsided to the people. I think it should be done with an invitation. These folks gave, had given their free time to come and discuss the impact, and now they can't rebuttal at all. And that's part of democracy is understanding. I don't think, I agree, we're steering down a course of large increases, and definitely, education is definitely in the forefront of my mind. But I don't think little 5,000 here on certain things, and a little 2,000 there is really moving the pendulum in the big picture, but we're giving large increases in other areas. So I'm very concerned with this process, and I encourage counsel not to continue in this fashion. I might be in favor of cuts, but I'm not in favor of the process in which this is being done tonight without any notice. The community doesn't know that you guys are making changes. It's not posted anywhere, nothing. The folks who presented don't even know. And if that's how you guys want to roll, it's just a bad look, in my opinion. Thank you. And again, I'm all for fiscal responsibility and areas to find cuts, but not in this matter.
Point of order, Counselor Boardland said thank you and yielded the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Boardland.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You had said thank you and yielded the floor. The time had been reset on the clock.
Oh, I was just kind of blurry. It's very hard to see from here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Okay, we'll take a vote. So Counselor Parker?
Abstain.
Gieske?
Aye.
McBride?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Rusk?
Abstain.
Pacino?
Aye.
Boardland?
Abstaining.
I am also a yes. Passes five to zero to three. Does anybody else have
Just from my records, was that passed?
It passed five to zero to three.
Thank you.
Does anybody else here have another reconsideration? No for the reconsiderations. Okay, I guess we're going to begin our business of this evening. We are on to voter registration, account number 1003. That is on page 56. 1003. Counselor Parker, would you like to move the number?
Make a motion for account number 1003 and the amount of $316,027. I still move.
Second, Gieske.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Gieske. Do we have anybody here from voter registration? Counselor Burt?
Point of information, if you could just mark me as away, I'm going to step away for a little bit. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Just be marked as stepping away.
Okay.
I'll let you know when I'm back.
Okay, thank you.
Voter registration was invited, but is apparently not here. I'd say that one of the biggest changes is, let me take a look here. There is, as you may recall, for one thing, on regular pay, the voter registrars in the middle of a term are only eligible for a raise one time. This is within the gap window. They haven't had a raise in a couple of years, so there's a small raise for them. But most of the increase in here is all to do with the presidential election, supplies, personnel. So it's almost exclusively. This, this is a fund that ebbs and flows with the elections. So it'll be, you know, this won't be an ongoing amount.
Do you have any questions? Counselor McBride?
Yeah, I have questions, because my understanding is that there's a couple of unknowns with regards to this, not necessarily this particular item, but in general, in that if there's a presidential primary, there's going to be more cost. And if there's another location for voting, there's going to be more cost. But those are unknown. So is this, if this is an unknown, can it go into contingency if that's what it's for?
Well, this is assuming, this, you know, is not looking at a second location, but it is assuming the primary. Well, this is assuming, this, you know, is not looking at a second location, but it is assuming the primary. Probably as we did lower the contingency. I'd hate to try to cut all the way off, so I should have having the voter registrar here to defend.
Can we, can we?
I had a point of information. It would be...
McBride would, Counselor McBride would have to yield the floor.
Point of information, thank you, Counselor McBride, I apologize for interrupting. It would be a legislative primary, not a presidential primary, because we had the presidential primary.
Come on, that's true, yeah, legislative, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I had that written on my note.
So I guess my question is, is this definitive numbers, or is it not?
So this must be, we don't do the legislative primaries, so it's gotta be just for the presidential election, then?
So it's not a matter of, this may, may...
No, so it must be, you said.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Do we have any further questions? Mr. Burke, it, I had in here that there was like basically seventy thousand dollars for a presidential with the early voting. And, because it does say on a Cost Center, one-zero-zero-three-six, primary elections.
Yeah, there's early voting, there's just not a second location added.
Sorry?
The issue hasn't, you know, as you discussed before about possibly having a second location, that wasn't added. But yes, the early voting is required.
All right, and that's why the presidential election went up to like ninety-three thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to get that clear, thank you very much. Okay, I don't see any more hands. We'll be voting on account number one-zero-zero-three for three-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand-and-twenty-seven dollars. Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Gajewski?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Rusk?
Yes.
Pacina?
Yes.
Bordelon? Oh, she is not, any attendance? And then I am a yes. That passes seven to zero to zero. Up next is the Groton Public Library, one-zero-six-three, page one-forty-six. Counselor Gajewski, would you like to make them move the number?
Certainly, please, just let me get that. I motion to approve one-million-eight-hundred, one-million-eight-hundred-forty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-nine dollars for Groton Public Library, object code one-zero-six-three, still moved.
Second?
Moved by Gajewski, seconded by Parker. Good evening, would you like to introduce yourselves and give us a synopsis on your budget, please?
Absolutely, let me just... I'm Jennifer Mealy, Library Director, and this is Michael Spellman, the Assistant Director. Thank you. The proposed budget before you is a five-point-four percent increase from last year. The difference is based on contractual raises, minimum wage increases, and non-union salary adjustments based on the recent government salary survey. Additionally, the library was requesting one part-time, no benefits staff position that would support both our busy youth services and circulation departments. In deliberating our budget, I think it's worth mentioning something that I spoke of last year about economic hardship. Then in times of inflation and when money is stretched thin, more people take advantage of the services offered at their public libraries. And I can attest that we have certainly seen increases in everything, including usage of the library's internet, computers, meeting rooms, and materials. Attendance and programs has more than doubled since last year. More than that, we are seeing more and more Groton citizens reaching out for help on any number of social issues that are facing them today, including digital literacy, unemployment, poverty, homelessness. Pretty much any subject that you can think of, they come to the library. I can confidently say our staff goes above and beyond to help every one of these individuals to the best of our ability. To meet these community needs, we would like to continue maintaining the level of service the community has come to expect. Thank you for your support and consideration.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for coming and thank you for doing such a great job with our library. It's really a jewel in our community. As we know, we are in tough times. And we all have to sort of look at all the different places that we could save. I noticed in your budget, you have a, you had two part-time circulation desk positions.
Correct.
And the request was for two. And I'd like to make a motion for a new number to bring the two down to one. And you can, you can, you can talk to it, but I think it feels that...
I was gonna say that the two was originally requested and the town manager had approved only, his approval was only one.
To do one, okay. Thank you. The new number is
Moved by Jones, do we have a second?
Second.
Do you have any comments? Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be opposing the amended cut, and the reason for that is we did, we have the funding of Mystic No Ink Library and Bill Memorial Library last night in their funding. I just don't think it would be fair, so I will be opposing the amendment.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director, you, I think, believe you've talked with the town manager on this. And are you comfortable with this cut for library operations?
I believe that would be eliminating the one position that we're asking for. Yes, I would be comfortable with that, yes.
All right, thank you.
Counselor McBride?
I just need some things, I guess I just have some questions, because I'm not understanding.
Of course.
With regards to the position and the cuts, because I'm looking at page one-forty-nine, positions, and I'm seeing seventeen, seventeen FTEs, request was for seventeen FTEs and manager's FTEs, but now we're talking that the manager had made some reductions, or?
This is a reduction in a part-time seasonal employee. And the seventeen you're talking about are union employees.
That's, okay, thank you for that clarification. So, just to clarify, so your reduction is specifically related to only for the part-time person? Okay, that's why I just want a clarification, thank you.
Point of clarification?
Point of information, I totally messed that up, I almost had it. This is a cut of an employee that has, a part-time employee that has not been hired, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I'll take my turn then. Seeing that we gave increases last night to outside libraries at five percent and in six, what was it, eight percent? And I do not see where I would be voting to cut you, the town, if we are not gonna cut the outside libraries. I stand on the budget process of you take care of our town things. And then if it is a good year, you give increases to outside libraries. That's sort of how I stand. So I won't support this, because I think you need to support our town libraries first, before we go in supporting outside libraries. That's where I stand.
Counselor Rusk?
Thank you. I just want to say I support all the libraries. I think they're all very important. I think they all serve a great service, and as somebody who works in social services, I see the value of what librarians do. So I have a hard time supporting taking away a part-time employee. My question for you is what does that look like if you do not get this part-time employee?
So when I say I'm comfortable, it doesn't mean that I wouldn't want one to help facilitate what's happening at the library. However, I do realize that we are in this situation right now of making tough cuts. And frankly, I'd like to keep the people that I have now to help facilitate what's happening every day at the library. So that was my suggestion of offering. However, what this would do to have this person, to be able to have librarians, be able to focus more on each individual that's coming in. This part-time person helps support the, more of the basic transactions that are happening every day, and helping with program support and things, because frankly, some of our programs, we have like a hundred people coming, and there needs to be a support person that can monitor what's happening in both the program itself or outside of the library while librarians are performing and helping the individual. So, and at the circulation department, we've seen increases as well, of transactional that's happening. In fact, tomorrow, we're expecting a couple hundred people for doling out solar eclipse sunglasses. And while that may not seem important, the endless amounts of requests and knowing that they can come to the library and get grant-funded glasses, I mean, it means a lot to the community. So having an extra person would certainly help support what the libraries are already doing. And so I would appreciate it, however, I understand where you stand, so.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation. So I feel like you've already been cut, because you had requested two. So I will not be supporting the sixteen thousand dollar cut, because I feel like you've already been cut, sixteen thousand dollars. So thank you for all that you do, and I wish I had known about the glasses, I just ordered mine in Amazon, so. Make good choices, people, when it comes to looking at the eclipse, thank you.
Counselor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. How are you currently dealing with only having one of these part-time employees? Because you're doing it right now, correctly, correct?
We are, we are. In fact, over many years, we've been losing little bits. We've been absorbing a lot of the increases from the minimum wage, as well as the union contract, contractual raises. So we've been absorbing that, so we've been looking at more efficient ways to do things. However, we're at a point where there's so many people coming in that we need to help support. So we're doing without not having the two, I mean, the X, the secondary part-time position would have been there to help focus eighteen hours in circulation and eighteen hours with our librarian support. However, we were considering if we only went with one, that it would do both sides, to help support both sides. So we're looking at, you know, trying to be efficient with what is being given to us, so.
So one person would be doing eighteen hours and eighteen hours?
No, they would be doing eighteen hours and splitting that between the two departments.
Okay.
To assist.
Understood.
As a support staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we will vote on the amended motion, which has the reduction, which is one-million-eight-hundred-twenty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Counselor Parker?
No.
I'm sorry, no? Counselor Gajewski?
No.
Counselor McBride?
No.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
I am a no. Rusk?
No.
Counselor Pacina?
Yes.
Counselor Bordelon is absent. That fails. One, two to five to zero. We now have the main motion on the floor of one-million-eight-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. I don't see any hands, so we will take a vote on this. Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Gajewski?
Yes.
Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Rusk?
Yes.
Counselor Pacina?
Yes.
I am also a yes. That passes seven to zero to zero. Up next is account three-three-one-zero, Borrowett, Connecticut, which is on page one-fifty. Counselor McBride, would you like to move that number?
Certainly, I'd like to move, move the number of twenty thousand for account number three-three-one-zero-zero, Borrowett, Connecticut.
Second, Gajewski.
Moved by McBride, seconded by Gajewski. Would you like to give us a synopsis?
So this is a state cooperative program. It allows reimbursements when somebody from the outside of Groton comes in and borrows books, and we do the lending and borrowing. We get a transaction, we get money for that. And it accumulates over the year, and then we get a payout from the state. We're one of the biggest net lenders. And so we typically have seen anywhere between sixteen to twenty thousand over the last couple of years. This is a fund that's always up for possible cuts. And so we utilize this fund for things that are outside of, I mean, in the library, but outside of possibly the operating budget. In fact, I don't know if that was last year or the year before, we had servers placed in a CIP that we needed upgraded, and we utilize this fund to offset that cost.
Thank you. Do we have any comments? Counselor Rusk?
Thank you. Just your financing plan, I want to make sure that I'm clear on it. The interest income comes from, so there's like twenty-one thousand dollars, and it's a twenty thousand dollar...
So when we request, we don't, we don't know actually what the amount's gonna be, it's always after our budget. So we estimate from the last year. And whatever we don't use within the year gets put into the fund where it accrues a nominal interest. But we try to spend that every single year, because it is a grant that needs, should be spent almost entirely, you know, every year.
And for clarification, this is a grant, this is not out of taxpayer dollars?
This is through the state, State of Connecticut, so we consider it a grant, but it is basically through taxpayer funds, not through Groton, it's the whole state.
Thank you.
Counselor Pacina?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Kind of wish we did this one first. Could this have gone toward a second clerk?
Typically, they like to see you use it for non-personnel.
Typically?
Yes.
Okay.
We have used it one time in the past for personnel, part-time. However, we were, there was a point in time where the State of Connecticut said it was no longer gonna be available. And so we moved that person, and coming to the budget, to move that person into the operating budget, because we were not sure if we were gonna lose that person. So it's, I don't wanna say it's volatile, but we'd never really know what's on the chopping block with the state, if it's an extra, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, I don't see any more hands. So we'll take a vote on this. Counselor Parker, account number three-three-one-zero for twenty thousand dollars.
Yes.
Gajewski?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Rusk?
Yes.
Pacina?
Yes.
Portia is absent, and I am a yes. That passes seven to zero to zero. Up next is Public Safety, account number one-zero-two-four, it's on page one-oh-one. One-zero-two-four, and Counselor Jones, would you like to move that number?
I move the Public Safety number ten-twenty-four for the total of ten-million-six-hundred-and-seventy... Over the past year, there have been countless times when we needed that type of platform, including at the scene of three fatal accidents, multiple critical incidents in crime scenes, and recently at the site of a homicide at Aquonic Road. But please know, our officers, dispatchers, and civilian personnel proudly deliver professional, internationally accredited policing services to the town. Our department serves as a regional multi-town 9/11 TSAP, public safety answering point, and the dispatch center provides 9/11 dispatch for two to three police departments in Groton, 10 fire departments, three ambulance services, LNM medics, as well as a regional hazmat response unit, and an incident management team in the marie group. In closing, I want you to know I do appreciate the challenges that we face. I know some stuff happened before I walked in here. I'm not quite sure of all the dynamics of it, but I do know that in previous considerations that the city of Groton Police and Groton Longpoint Police were fully allocated, the percentages of their increases at that time were certainly higher than what we've requested in this budget. But I want you to know that I understand, and I do share responsibility, we have as good stewards of the public tax dollars. And I certainly appreciate and understand that many times, those that do adhere to financial responsibility sometimes suffer the consequences of others, and I think that's unfortunate, but that comes in public service. I certainly get that. But again, as a reminder, the town manager did already make a cut. One of the positions that I had asked for has already been cut, did not make it to you, and I certainly understand his need to do that. So with that, I'm certainly welcome to welcome any questions that you might have. I anticipate some. I've also got Deputy Chief Gately, who's prepared to give you a little insight as to why we need this accreditation manager, why it's so important, and the costs associated with, or the impact of Kalia as a whole, since he, for a long time, has been our accreditation manager.
Thank you. I just want to note that I've been back for about five minutes. Thank you. Yes, I was going to mention that. I have Counselor Bordelon had left the meeting at 6:46 and has returned at 7:08 PM.
Thank you.
Do we have any comments? Counselor Parker?
You just received a Kalia?
12 days ago.
12 days ago. And how long have you been working on that?
Years. You've been working on it for years.
And you just got tier one, I believe, for the state. Is that correct?
We got that last year, but as you know, with your experience, it's a moving target with Post. We've adopted Kalia. We're all in on that. Myself and the Deputy Chief came from a Kalia accredited agency, and I think, as he would tell you, we didn't really know why we were doing some of the things we were doing, having gone through this process and sat through the hearings a couple of weeks ago in Montgomery, Alabama, with a panel of people that are professionals in the industry, asking us. It was, it's an important thing to do, and I think the town deserves that, and we're going to maintain that.
And did you have any assistance? Because I believe at one point you said you had hired somebody, a long time ago, but it's just Deputy Chief Gately.
If you'd like to scratch that.
And I believe someone else is assisting you, correct?
Yes, that's correct. This project started years ago, yes, because we were replacing the policy manual from 1999. So when I came on board in 2016, Chief put me in charge of this policy revision project in 2017. We did contract with an outside legal firm that specializes in policy development. They gave us templates of policies that we needed to go through and ensure that they met the practices that we are currently employing. We had to tweak them and go through every one of them. I've published 124 policies to date. I can tell you that, that 1999 manual, it's old, it's from 99, and I can tell you this much. This right here represents all of the use-of-force policies.
I'm having trouble hearing. I apologize.
Can you hear me?
A little closer, something.
All right. How about now? Can you hear me now?
It's okay. It's not really good. I heard Chief Fizaro a little bit better.
Just in the area of use-of-force, for example, the 1999 manual had about 15 to 20 pages of use-of-force currently. We have 10 separate use-of-force policies comprising 131 pages. It's a high liability area. Times have changed since 1999, so we needed to come into 21st century policing model and adopt the best practices, and that's just a minute part of what this has entailed. It's not just policy, it's practices, it's training when you put out new policy, because any time you institute something new into a police department, you have to show your folks how to do it, what you expect from them. We have to meet all these standards and directives through Kalia or through Post, and they pretty much tell you, this is how you are expected to do it. We have to devise a directive to tell our people what we expect them to do, how we expect them to do it. It's an incredibly complicated system. It's a lot of work. For the clear accreditation, we had to fulfill 160 standards, and those are bulleted standards. It's not just one thing. It's typically, you have a standard, and you have to do A, B, C, D, E. So you have to have directives that address each one of those things, and then you have to prove that you're doing them. So you have to show that, yes, our officers did this particular function, and you have to have different ways of doing that. Some things are visual standards, some things you have to have a report for, some of them you have to have checklists for, all those things we had to comprise. A lot of those things did not exist. It's, as you can understand, it's an incredibly heavy lift. I could tell you, it's a colossal undertaking. We did have a team approach because when, as the chief said, we came from a Kalia accredited agency, but we didn't really understand the depths of what it entailed because we weren't involved that deeply in it. Once we got here, we were involved in it, and I can tell you, we didn't sign up to do the Kalia accreditation process until the fall of 2021. And because of that, you don't get access to their standards, so you can't tell exactly what it is that they need you to represent for your standards. So when you're looking at Kalia, sometimes you have to go into the policies that you already have under development and say, oh, wait a minute, we have to actually add this particular thing, we have to add that particular thing so that we can adhere to the best standards in law enforcement, and that's what we've done. Yes, it's been a multi-year project, but in the interim, we've done a lot of other things. I was not just the accreditation manager, I'm also the public information officer. I handle all news media requests. I usually author or review all the press releases that come out of our department. I am also the professional standards commander. I oversee all the internal affairs and all of the citizens' complaints that come in. There's an awful lot of work that goes involved just with compiling all that information and categorizing things and coordinating things with the person that's making the complaint and letters and a lot of different things that go along with it. I oversee the special projects and training division. We have a very capable commander as a lieutenant that runs that unit, but it's under my umbrella. I also, I'm the chief's right-hand man, so obviously I'm involved in most decision-making processes, and I review a lot of things with him. And during this timeframe, I, along with one of our lieutenants and one of our officers, volunteered to become assessors for Post, thinking that that was going to help us with this process. It really did help us with the process. You get to see what other people are doing as well and help them with their processes and get some good ideas. Yeah, it's a huge undertaking. I can tell you this, this is not, we didn't just win the race. This is, we just finished the first leg of an incredibly long marathon. It's a long race, and as the chief indicated, it doesn't end now. Things are constantly changing in law enforcement. Laws change, Post required mandated state policies change. I can tell you that since 2021, there's been a number of changes that have occurred just with the mandated policies in Post. Since '22, the family violence policy changed in 2022. That's a 32-page policy that every department has to have. That changed in 2022, but not only that, it just changed again in January 2024. So you have to go through, take all those changes in, make sure that you incorporate them, and I look at these things meticulously because I want to make sure that everything that needs to be captured is captured. It's a ton of work. I don't know how much more I can emphasize it. We're not asking for the position because we want one. I mean, this is a must-have. We've got to this point, but the race continues, and we did a team approach when we started doing the Kalia accreditation because we realized we had to. Myself and one of our lieutenants attended the Kalia conference, the first one we were able to attend once we signed up. We got exposed to all the standards, the things that we needed, and I was still undergoing the policy project. So that's a huge part of this. We also needed somebody to start to compile the proofs of compliance, which is all the things you need to show that, yes, we have this policy, it says we do all these things. Here's examples of us doing all of those things, and that's a lot of work. So we bifurcated that to get to this finish line. We got a team approach. We got a lot of good people, and the fellow that came out to assess us from Kalia, they did 10 days of a remote assessment where their assessors get into our system and look at all of our policies, all of our procedures, all of our proofs to ensure that we meet those standards. For the first go-around Kalia, they're very forgiving. They understand, hey, it's your first one, so they're going to give you some guidance, some leeway. We had to fix certain things along the way. Sometimes we may have in a policy say, you should do this particular thing. They're like, no, 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 it's not should. It's not a recommendation. You shall do that particular thing. So we'd have to change little bits of policy to make sure that we adhere to that. It's a complicated process, but we got through that in 10 days. We had 50 things that we needed to change, and we thought we were in really, really good shape, but there were things that we needed to tweak. They allow you to do that on the first go-around. Then they sent another gentleman out from Chicago for three days. He spent at our police department, reviewing our processes, looking at certain things he had to visually inspect, and talking to members of the community and law enforcement partners, and I know there's people in this room that he spoke to, until we get to what we thought is the finish line, but you then have to go to the Kalia conference, and you go in front of a panel of Kalia commissioners, and you have to answer a bunch of questions and defend all the things that you have as part of your agency, until they finally get to the point where they give you the accreditation. It's a long process, yes. Took years. We're proud of what we've done, though.
I agree. You can tell he's passionate about this, and he's put a lot of work into it. What he's not telling you is about the hours of work when he's, you know, maybe when I'm sleeping or other people are doing things, but they did provide us with the schedule of our upcoming inspections over the next four years. So when we were awarded that certificate that we were Kalia accredited, the page attached to it said, you will be re-inspected on these dates over the course. So we know when we're getting inspected in 2025, 2026, we've already received that stuff.
I just wanted to mention, Arneisha Green, the HR director, and I talked with her insurance company, and one thing they said about this is, if there is any kind of lawsuit against the department, this makes it way easier to defend. It takes off some of their arguments about policies.
I'm certainly open to answer any other questions about stuff that you may have.
Counselor Parker, I believe you still have time, if you would like to continue.
Thank you. Yes, you do, and you guys do know I understand, because I am part of that team, too, the assessors for the state. So myself and another officer do the same thing, so I understand the time commitment. I just want to be, if we're going to be equitable about everything, I just want to be equitable, and that's my two cents. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief, and thank you for running a top-of-the-line police department for our town.
Thanks for the support.
Yep, it's been great. Just a couple more questions on the accreditation officer. He or she, will it be their full-time job to do this?
Yes, they may have some ancillary duties.
Any assistance, because I believe at one point you said you had some, had hired somebody, a long time ago, but it's just Deputy Chief Gately.
If you'd like to switch that.
And I believe someone else is assisting you, correct?
Yes, that's correct. This project started years ago, yes, because we were replacing the policy manual from 1999. So when I came on board in 2016, Chief put me in charge of this policy revision project in 2017. We did contract with an outside legal firm that specializes in policy development. They gave us templates of policies that we needed to go through and ensure that they met the practices that we are currently employing. We had to tweak them and go through every one of them. I've published 124 policies to date. I can tell you that, that 1999 manual, it's old, it's from 99, and I can tell you this much. This right here represents all of the use of force.
I'm having trouble hearing, I apologize.
Can you hear me?
Hold up closer or something.
All right. How about now? Can you hear me now?
Um, it's okay, it's not really good. I, I heard Chief Asaro a little bit better.
Just in the area of use of force, for example, the 1999 manual had about 15 to 20 pages of use of force. Currently, we have 10 separate use of force policies comprising 131 pages. It's a high liability area. Times have changed since 1999, so we needed to come into 21st century policing model and adopt the best practices, and that's just a minute part of what this has entailed. It's not just policy, it's practices, it's training when you put out new policy, because any time you institute, institute something new into a police department, you have to show your folks how to do it, what you expect from them. We have to meet all these standards and directives through Kalia or through POST, and they pretty much tell you, this is how you are expected to do it. We have to devise a directive to tell our people what we expect them to do, how we expect them to do it. It's an incredibly complicated system. It's a lot of work. For the clear accreditation, we had to fulfill 160 standards, and those are bulleted standards. It's not just one thing. It's typically, you have a standard and then you have, and you have to do A, B, C, D, E. So you have to have directives that address each one of those things, and then you have to prove that you're doing them. So you have to show that, yes, our officers did this particular function, and you have to have different ways of doing that. Some things are visual standards, some things you have to have a report for, some of them you have to have checklists for, all those things we had to comprise. A lot of those things did not exist. It's, as you can understand, it's an incredibly heavy lift. I could tell you, it's a colossal undertaking. We did have a team approach, because when, as the chief said, we came from a clear accreditation agency, but we didn't really understand the depths of what it entailed, because we weren't involved that deeply in it. Once we got here, we were involved in it, and I can tell you, we didn't sign up to do the Kalia accreditation process until the fall of 2021. And because of that, you don't get access to their standards, so you can't tell exactly what it is that they need you to represent for your standards. So when you're looking at Kalia, sometimes you have to go into the policies that you already have under development, say, oh, wait a minute, we have to actually add this particular thing, we have to add that particular thing, so that we can adhere to the best standards in law enforcement. And that's what we've done. Yes, it's been a multi-year project, but in the interim, we've done a lot of other things. I was not just the accreditation manager, I'm also the public information officer, I handle all news media requests, I usually author or review all the press releases that come out of our department. I am also the professional standards commander, I oversee all the internal affairs and all of the citizens' complaints that come in. There's an awful lot of work that goes involved just with compiling all that information and categorizing things and coordinating things with the person that's making the complaint and letters and a lot of different things that go along with it. I oversee the special projects and training division. We have a very capable commander as a lieutenant that runs that unit, but it's under my umbrella. I also, I'm the chief's right-hand man, so obviously I'm involved in most decision-making processes, and I review a lot of things with him. And during this timeframe, I, along with one of our lieutenants and one of our officers, volunteered to become assessors for POST, thinking that that was going to help us with this process. It really did help us with the process. You get to see what other people are doing as well, and help them with their processes, and get some good ideas. Yeah, it's a huge undertaking. I can tell you this, this is not, we didn't just win the race. This is, we just finished the first leg of an incredibly long marathon. It, it's a long race, and as the chief indicated, it doesn't end now. Things are constantly changing in law enforcement. Laws change, POST required mandated state policies change. I can tell you that since 2021, there's been a number of changes that have occurred just with the mandated policies in POST. Since '22, the family violence policy changed in 2022. That's a 32-page policy that every department has to have. That changed in 2022, but not only that, it just changed again in January 2024. So you have to go through, take all those changes in, make sure that you incorporate them, and I look at these things meticulously, because I want to make sure that everything that needs to be captured is captured. It's a ton of work. I don't know how much more I can emphasize it. We're not asking for the position because we, we want one, I mean, this is a must-have. We, we got to this point, but the race continues. And we did a team approach when we started doing the Kalia accreditation, because we realized we had to. Myself and one of our lieutenants attended the Kalia conference, the first one we were able to attend once we signed up. We got exposed to all the standards, the things that we needed, and I was still undergoing the policy project. So that's a huge part of this. We also needed somebody to start to compile the proofs of compliance, which is all the things you need to show that, yes, we have this policy, it says we do all these things, here's examples of us doing all of those things, and that's a lot of work. So we bifurcated that to get to this finish line. We got a team approach, we got a lot of good people, and the, the fellow that came out to assess us from Kalia, they, they did 10 days of a remote assessment where their assessors get into our system and look at all of our policies, all of our procedures, all of our proofs to ensure that we meet those standards. For the first go-around, Kalia, they're very forgiving. They understand, hey, it's your first one, so they're going to give you some guidance, some leeway. We had to fix certain things along the way. Sometimes we may have in a policy say, you should do this particular thing. They're like, no, 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 it's not should, it's not a recommendation, you shall do that particular thing. So we'd have to change little bits of policy to make sure that we adhere to that. It's, it's a complicated process, but we got through that in 10 days. We had 50 things that we needed to change, and we thought we were in really, really good shape, but there were things that we needed to tweak. They allow you to do that on the first go-around. Then they sent another gentleman out from Chicago for three days. He spent at our police department, reviewing our processes, looking at certain things he had to visually inspect, and talking to members of the community and law enforcement partners, and I know there's people in this room that he spoke to, until we get to what we thought is the finish line, but you then have to go to the Kalia conference, and you go in front of a panel of Kalia commissioners, and you have to answer a bunch of questions and defend all the things that you have as part of your agency, until they finally get to the point where they, they give you the accreditation. It's a long process, yes, it took years. We're proud of what we've done, though.
I agree. You can tell he's passionate about this, and he's put a lot of work into it. What he's not telling you is about the hours of work when he's, you know, maybe when I'm sleeping or other people are doing things. But they did provide us with the schedule of our upcoming inspections over the next four years. So when we were awarded that certificate that we were Kalia accredited, the page attached to it said, you will be re-inspected on these dates over the course. So we know when we're getting inspected in 2025, 2026, we've already received that stuff.
I just wanted to mention, Arneesh Agreed, the HR director, and I talked to her, our insurance company, and one thing they said about this is, if there is any kind of lawsuit against the department, this makes it way easier to defend. It's like, takes off some of their arguments about policies, so.
I'm certainly open to answer any other questions about stuff that you may have.
Counselor Parker, do you, I believe you still have time, if you would like to continue?
Um, thank you. Yes, you do, and you guys do know I, I understand, because I am part of that team too, the assessors for the state. So myself and another officer do the same thing, so I understand the time commitment. I just want to be, if we're going to be equitable about everything, I just want to be equitable, and that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Chief and Deputy Chief, and thank you for running a top-of-the-line police department for our town.
Thanks for the support.
Yep, it's been great. Just a couple more questions on the accreditation officer. He or she, will it be their full-time job to do this?
Yes, they may have some ancillary duties, but they'll be assigned to do this almost exclusively. What we did learn, and I've learned, you know, and, and all due respect to our colleagues that, that have not, you know, Kalia is a lift. I'm, I'm not going to lie on that, it's a lift, and it's probably more of a lift than we thought. At various times during the process, we said, you know, we'll stay state accreditation, but I, I, I do fervently believe now, having gone through the process, been at their conference, understand the, the stuff that goes along with it, that it's the right commitment to make on behalf of the town. Absolutely, wholeheartedly, and, and to answer your questions more specifically, is yes, that person, and, and we were the anomaly, and it's in this document that they provided me, having a team approach usually doesn't meet with success. It did in our case, which was a bit of a surprise to the Kalia assessor that came out, but it is something that really requires the, the full dedication of an officer. And honestly, across Connecticut, I think you're seeing this, and, you know, I know Chief Knowles was here talking the other night about his department, which is markedly different than ours and considerably smaller, and we're talking about a 90, over 90-person agency that we're looking for an accreditation manager for. So that, that's going to be the, the bulk of their work. In fact, you know, we're, we're trying to parse that out now among existing staff, but it should be a person.
You can combine them all together.
And that's the school solution, according to Kalia. That's generally what they have. Most, I don't know of any other agency that went for their accreditation a couple of weeks ago that didn't have somebody dedicated to this exclusively. And, you know, I do commend the deputy chief. We had, you know, Lieutenant, Doctor, by the way, Lieutenant, PhD, Doctor Dave Minor, one of our, our detective lieutenant who earned his PhD today, was conferred that after his dissertation. So I'm just putting that out on the record, so we can sing his praises.
Congratulations.
And, and one of our officers helped put together this, this program.
Have you noticed, as you've worked your way through the Kalia process, an uptick in morale? Has it helped with internal morale of the department because of the professionalism that you're, you're doing?
I'll, I'll tell you this. So when we were at that conference, they asked a similar question, what was your approach to this? And, and I said, well, you know what, I think our officers grow numb to hearing it from me, and even from the deputy chief or from one of the captains. They're like, we're, we're the administration, we're supposed to be the cheerleaders of this stuff. But when you have an officer, a frontline officer, come forward and realize how important this is, an officer that, you know, has been, been around the block for a few years, and, supervisors within the department start saying, now I get it, and they realize, yeah, it, it's a huge source of pride, you know? And it should be, right? There's, you know, I think it's one of those, and I hate to give ourselves a pat in the back, but I, I think, not because of my efforts, but because of the efforts of so many others, and because there has been wholesale, wholesale support, not just from the department, but from you guys and from the, the RTM. I mean, this was something that was brought to me when I became, when I got sworn in as chief. It was a discussion that was had with me, with the previous town manager, and the fact that these efforts were underway previously that never met with success. We've met with success, so I'm, I'm pretty happy about that, and I think our officers are happy, our officers, dispatchers, and civilians are all happy with it.
All right. Thank you. That's great. I know this is a huge accomplishment. What other accomplishments have you had this year?
I think I went through a bunch, I could go through more. I mean, we've had, you know, we had an officer get an award from the Attorney General of the United States, we've, we've, we've done pretty well, but we're focusing on the core competencies that we should be focusing on as a police department. I'm not giving you things, I'm not presenting things in my budget that are frivolous, I'm not giving you these things that are, I'm telling you what we need to do as a municipal police department, and the services that we should provide, and I'm not looking for things that are best left in the hands of other people. I'm looking for things that are good for the town of Groton, good for our officers, good for our department, and good for the taxpayers of this community, and I'm not wasting their money.
All right. Thank you very much.
Counselor Ross.
Thank you. Thank you both, or all, for being here tonight. I do appreciate all that you do. Couple quick questions on your budget. Number, line item 5105 longevity pay.
Yes.
It's a small number, but can you explain that, please?
It's, it's gone away over the years, but those are officers that, at one point in time, were given longevity. There was a, whether it was through contracts or other, you know, policies in the town. If you are with the department for X amount of years, or if you're a town employee for X amount of years, you get an additional sum of money. Most of those people are no longer with us. There may be one or two in the room, not us, that, that may still qualify for that, but, but that has been kind of sunset over the years.
Okay. Sorry, glasses. One, or 5119 salary reimbursement. What is that line item?
I believe you're.
It's a negative number, so that's why.
Yeah, that's probably the Board of Ed, is it 144,000?
It is, it's reimbursement for the Board of Ed.
Okay. Thank you. And you have on line item 54200 vehicles, but am I correct that you have three under fleet that you are looking to replace?
So if, if.
I realize it's in a different.
Yeah, we've, well, yes, and, and I'll have to, we don't buy the vehicles, we work closely with Public Works, they buy the vehicles. You know, I would point out to the council, and, and I was, was, we need vehicles replaced, we're no different than other departments. One of the things that you should be aware of is, we are able to fund a vehicle ourself, and I'll tell you how that third vehicle is getting funded. When our officers go out and work construction projects, and they use a vehicle, like, you know, there's, there's road construction or something's happening, and now throughout the town you have an officer assigned there, they receive overtime pay for that. But the town also receives a stipend from the, from the vendor who's doing that, or the construction company. That's to offset the cost of some of the fringe benefits, but more importantly, it's also, we assess a, a fee for the cruiser usage. For years, that, that has just kind of sat in a pot and accumulated. And a month or so ago, I, you know, understanding the, the huge need that we have for vehicles, I approached the, the town manager and said, is there any way we can figure out how to get that money, so we can buy, we can replace a car without burdening the taxpayers more? So that is where that third vehicle is from, and I, I certainly hope, and I'm, you know, I appreciate this, we, we need those cars, and I can, like I said, I can provide the town manager with a list of our vehicles, where they're at. We have 15 over 100,000 miles, we've got some that we're getting rid of. Again, full-train, we have three new cars that were purchased last year that have been at our vendor since October. They could not, they could not get the allocation, allocate, allotment, excuse me, of, of equipment, you know, the, the cages that go in them, that sort of stuff, because of commodity constraints, that's still one of the problems we're having now. So they haven't been fielded yet. One's in our parking, parking lot, waiting for IT to update the IT so we can field it. The other two are there, but those are, those are cars we already planned for going. So when you look at the list I give you, you'll see those are, those are those deadline cars that I spoke to. What we do traditionally do is we cascade vehicles down to get rid of the worst ones in the fleet, to get rid of the 07s, 08s, the Crown Victorias, which, which we still have, some of the cars that have been around for, for a long, long time. So try to manage that as effectively as possible.
Permission to speak on fleet?
Will you be here for the fleet discussion, or will that just be Mr. Hanover?
I can, but I'll answer whatever you want now, any?
I just. I don't want to, I don't want to, we've, we've been keeping to the, the account on the floor, and we don't want to be talking, we don't want to talk about.
I understand. I did prepare for this only because I know that you had similar questions, and I can give you what, what it relates to my department. Again, they are in the Public Works budget.
I can ask my question to Public Works, I don't want to step over.
Can you send us, potentially by email, a description of your standing on fleets?
I beg your pardon?
Can you send us an email regarding your standing on fleet when it comes to that? Because we can't talk about another topic at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing else, other than to say congratulations to Dr. Minor. That's fantastic. Thank you.
Counselor McBride.
Thank you very much for the detailed explanation. Congratulations on all of your recent accomplishments. I, I at first, I'll just be completely honest, I was questioning the accreditation manager, because, as you know, we're in a difficult spot, and I was looking to maybe make a motion to remove that, because we can't afford hardly anything to share. But your, your explanation and your detail, it seems like it's something you truly do need, so I can understand and appreciate the detail. But I do have a couple of questions, because what I'm looking to do is, I looked at three particular accounts, utilities, repairs, and professional technical services. In all three of those, the estimate for '24 is well under the request. It's under the budget for '24, but it's under, the estimate's under the budget for '24 and significantly less than the request. So my question is, it looks like there's about $50,000 between those three accounts.
Can you repeat their accounts, so fellow counselors can follow you?
Yes, sorry, I apologize. On page 105, utilities 5220, repairs and maintenance 5260, software maintenance 5261, 5290, professional technical services. If you look at, if you compare the adjusted '24 and the estimate for, estimate for '24, the estimate for '24 is lot, less than the budget for '24, which makes the increase for the request for '25 much larger than, than what I would foresee as needed, because the estimate is less than the budget for '24. So my question is, it looks like there's about 50 or 59,000, or what I would say would be potentially excess budget compared to '24 estimates. So my question is, could you forego, like, a 50,000 reduction in the overall line item if we took it from that number, and you could divide it up between those four accounts? Because it looks like you're, you're under.
Just, just one note, those are done by departments, not, they submit, when, when do they submit those? Or when do those?
December.
Yeah, they're, they're early, they're, they're not real accurate, just, I wouldn't, I don't even look at the estimates myself, but.
Okay.
I would worry about the adjusted and overall.
So just assume the adjusted is a good number, don't assume.
And, and if I may, Counselor, what I did point out, you know, unlike, when we, we are, we try to be responsible with the money that we're, we're given. And with regularity, if we don't spend money, or if we find things cheaper, that money goes back to the town at the end of the year. You know, we don't, we don't, we don't pad it for that, but we try to be judicious. We try to make sure that what we're saying we need is what we need. But honestly, if we can reserve, realize savings and send it back to the town, I have no problem with doing that. You know, I can't definitively tell you that those estimates will hold true when it comes to the end of this budget year, but it's kind of a swag that we, we make, you know, in the, in the fall and early winter.
Okay. All right, that's fair. I was just looking to move a number, a different number, with the hope that if you needed it, we could get it from contingency, but based on Town Manager Burt's advice, I don't think that would be prudent at this time, so, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The account that, welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The, the account that you're using to buy a vehicle, is there any way to make that account accumulate faster?
So what we've done is, we yearly assess, we reevaluate that, we talk to finance about what that figure's going to be. So it's, it's a nominal amount that's added on to the hourly rate that we charge companies. We do try and keep it in parity with neighboring communities, kind of industry standard, if you will. So other police departments, we, we go around the area and find out what they're charging for that, that additional charge for vehicle. We keep it in, in line with that. I would say, if you have more development, more construction, more work here in town that our officers can take advantage of on overtime, that number will go up quickly, because we'll be working a lot more on those construction projects.
What a unique idea. Maybe we'll try to do that.
Just a thought.
Yeah, it's a great thought. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Counselor Gieske.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too have concern, I, I think my, I might, I might kind of all over the place on this. Just, do you know what the total cost to do the, blanking on the acronym, accreditation? What has been the total cost to the town, in a sense?
It depends on how you want that. If you want it broken down, I, I don't know it off the top of my head, it's been, it's been a lot of money. And I will tell you, that's not unique to us, it's every department. We were mandated with, with accreditation through the Police Accountability Bill. Originally, every department was supposed to be Kalia accredited. You know, fortunately, the General Assembly took another look at that and realized that was unattainable, and it was not certainly something that Kalia wanted, because Kalia brands itself as the gold standard. They don't want every department, it's, it's a tough one to attain. It's been a lot of money. I, I can't give you a figure on that, but there's been uncompensated costs. I mean, he just told you how much work he put into it. All of us have, have done it, certainly in, in my wing of the building, we've done a lot of work, so I don't have a number to give you with that, but I can tell you that the price isn't going down, it's getting more expensive. That's just a reality of what policing is like in, in modern society, and certainly here in Connecticut. The, the requirements for accreditation aren't changing, they're going to continue. If you will, you can consider this an unfunded mandate, because it is a requirement from the General Assembly, as are many other things that I talked about in my opening remarks that we've done, and we've gotten in front of. So the, the cost of municipalities continues to increase, the revenue that we get from the state may not keep up with that. So I'm, I'm sorry that I can't give you a straight answer, but when it comes to man-hours and, you know, fees and all that sort of stuff, it's, it's substantial.
And, yeah, thank you for that, and I, I understand, I, I appreciate the deputy chief's work on this. Is it possible to do a part-time person to do this person? No?
We've tried to do that.
It's not feasible. If I was an hourly employee, it'd be a lot more, I promise you, because I spent a lot of hours off the books working on this, because we needed to hit that finish line, we needed to get things done, we have deadlines that we want to fulfill, that we have done. I can tell you that, like we said before, it's, it's, it's not the end of the race. For these 160 standards that we needed to satisfy that required, it's over 600 proofs, you know, proving that we do it, meaning either it's mentioned in a report, or we have a checklist showing that we did something, or, hey, officers are required to wear reflective vests when they're directing traffic or at a scene of an accident. How do we prove that? Accreditation manager goes out and takes a picture of one of our, one of our officers in reflective clothing while he's out at the scene. That's a lot of things that, it's time-consuming processes that, yes, we've been able to, for the first go-around, get that done with this team approach, but like, we all have other jobs that we do within the department, and you really need somebody to spearhead the effort, that can be very organized and can manage all of the different things that we have to do, and it's a lot.
And again, I just might highlight for you, you know, one of my colleagues came to you the other night to say that his department needed someone to do this very thing, and we're, we're doing it in Groton, right? We're doing it, you know, I'm sure, you know, Counselor Parker would love some assistance with that, too. We, we certainly, you know, this, this is a, it's a heavy lift. But, you know, obviously, and listen, and I don't want you folks to think that we don't understand and appreciate that there are some tough budget times, but we're trying to respond to everything that the, the elected bodies in this town has asked us to do for years. We're trying to be good stewards of the town tax dollars, and, you know, I just am disappointed that we're all in this position, for whatever reason.
Well, thank you for that, Chief. My next question, and I had asked the town manager about this in a phone conversation we had, it was the emergency communications line item, it's now going to be 12410, it's on page 104. That is dispatchers, correct?
Yes. Those, that's one of those cost centers that we realigned, because a number of years ago, emergency management and dispatch were a part of a different town department, they were merged into ours, and what we've done over the course of the last year, working with finance, you know, Laurie was a big help in this, we've tried to right-size things and put them where they should be. In years past, I've been asked questions about certain things, where, you know, where's that, what, what's this line item, what is it about, and the cost centers. So those cost centers that were zeroed out were actually different cost centers last year.
Yeah, it's further, and that, yeah, it's, it's further down in our budget book, which brings me to my next question. You've had lots of savings in that area. Is that due to the lack of being able to find dispatchers and fill positions and?
Yes. Yeah. We're, you know, as much as there's been challenges in law enforcement to get people into the, into the jobs, we've been, we've been very successful with police officers. We have not been as successful with dispatchers. We're, we're running into challenges. There's, we're not alone in that, we're not unique. I, I think there are some things, there are some certainly conversations that could be had about how to do that better as a, as an entity, but we're having trouble getting dispatchers. It's not unique to us. So I, you know, I met with our dispatchers last night, you know, indicated I was coming here, is there any message that, that they were looking for in there? You know, some of our officers are working, excuse me, our telecommunications are working excessive hours because of shortages there. And, and that's not, you know, we've had a lot of help from Human Resources to recruit, to hire. Some people get hired, they find out it's not a job for them, so, you know, the positions that we haven't filled hasn't been for lack of trying. But yeah, there's been a little savings because of that, but not, not a good kind of savings, not, not when you're, you know, if you want to come up to the dispatch center at any time, we'll introduce you to those guys, and you can hear from, from them individually. But I think there's certainly some opportunities there where we could do things that would be for the betterment of all, and maybe work towards, you know, achieving something that would be worthwhile.
Yeah, because I was looking at past budget numbers for this object code. You've had savings through years, but then one year you were over, and it's just, it's, I, I'm getting that it's a very hard thing to calculate, to figure it out. So were those dispatchers, they were paid overtime, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, how many vacant dispatchers do you have now, and how long? You have four vacant dispatchers?
We're authorized through the budget 13, and really, that's, that's what we need, but we have not been able to attain that. I will tell you, we've, and here's how I explain it to new individuals that come in for an interview for a dispatch position. For a long time, our dispatch center was the place to go. Everybody wanted, everybody who was a dispatcher wanted to work at Groton Fire alarm, the Groton Emergency Communications Center. But there weren't any openings because we had a crew of, of telecommunications dispatchers that were there for a long time, worked for decades. In the last several years, many of them have retired. We're now looking at a couple others retired. We've lost some in the last several years that have been longtime town employees, and we have, whether it's the workforce, the complexity of our dispatch center, I outlined for you in my opening comments, we dispatch for 10 fire departments, four emergency services providers, you know, two police departments, and, and again, it's not unique to us. I've, you know, spoken with my colleagues, certainly Captain B is involved in conversations with his, and there's, we're, like we are in police work, we're fighting over a very small pool of applicants, not just here in southeastern Connecticut, but universally. It, it is a tough job, and it's, it's not for everybody. You're sitting in there, you're answering 911 calls, you're dealing with people in distress, you're dealing with people at the worst times in their life on the phone, trying to help them remotely. Meanwhile, you may have a radio car go out there calling in something that you have to respond to, a fire truck or fire officer, you know, and another phone call ringing, waiting for an emergency dispatch of their own. So there's a lot that they deal with, and it can be a high-stress job. And if you go in there now, there may not be anything going on. They may be sitting there, you might say, this doesn't look that bad. Five minutes later, they may all have the phones ringing off the hook, have people calling in. So it is, it's, it's a very important, but a high-stress job.
And then, so my next question is, how long have those vacancies been, how long have you had four vacancies, or at least two vacancies?
Well, I can tell you, that's a moving target. Because we hired some individuals earlier this year, and frankly, one of, back in, I think it was February, I had two dispatchers start, one left. Meanwhile, another incumbent dispatcher left to become a firefighter. So it's, it's ebbed and flowed. As much as we've put people in, in some respects, other people leave. I can tell you that since 2020, we've lost 10 dispatchers. And that accounts for individuals that have been hired and later left for another reason. For whether they've retired after long years of service, or left after a short term because it wasn't for them, since 2020, we've lost 10. And I expect that we're probably going to lose another, I hope not, but with the potential exists for us to lose other dispatchers in the not-too-distant future. Some of which have just have come to the end of their, their career.
How long does it take to complete the hiring process for a dispatcher?
To complete the hiring process, it depends. We work with Human Resources, there's a testing process that they go through, we do a background investigation. So a couple of months from, from when they apply, but the, the certification process takes a lot longer. You know, they don't walk in the door and automatically they're, they're working. It's much like a police officer for the better part of the, the first year they're employed. They're not working on their own, they're under a, essentially a train-the-trainer type environment where seasoned community, communications trainer will work with them, they'll learn how to dispatch on the police side, and then they'll go to the fireside and vice versa. So it takes generally about nine months to get them fully trained, and also credentialed with all the things that are required through the state and federal government for their credentialing and accessing criminal justice systems.
Do you see yourself filling all these vacancies in the next year?
I see myself trying, yes. I see myself as, and I, and I owe that to these guys, and they're, and I know they're listening to this meeting as we're talking right now. I told you, I met with them last night, they had some serious concerns. They, they had desperate, you know, I told them, you know, they had heard rumors and all these other things. I said, listen, don't listen to rumors, listen to fact. I said, I'm going to work hard to, to hire what we can to get you up to the staffing you should be.
When's the last time you've been at full capacity for dispatchers?
I can't answer that. It's been, it's been a number of years. It's been, it's almost been aspirational for us to get there, but it's certainly something that we've worked hard towards, and-
Is it possible to move a dispatcher position and trade it for the accreditation position?
I, boy, that's a Sophie's Choice there you're giving me. I mean, that's, you know, clearly, I don't want to undervalue either one of those, whether it's accreditation manager, that's a decision you guys are going to have to make. I mean, I, I'm just giving you the facts, you know, certainly when, when the decisions are made as to what we are appropriated for funds. Listen, I, I told you, I'm not asking for pet projects here. I'm not looking for things that are fun and games, I'm, I'm looking for delivery of services-
And I'm looking for savings.
I get it, and I hope those people-
We're both doing our jobs.
I hope those people that haven't realized the savings that should have are held accountable as well. And I think that you should hold us accountable as department heads to make sure that we're doing what we should be doing in, in providing the services, but listen, I, I, I understand what you're asking.
Yeah. Um, yeah. I don't know where, I have no idea where I'm going to go. But, because my time's about to expire, but that is it for me. But it's just an idea that I've thrown out there. Thank you.
Counselor Borderline?
Are you calling on me? I'm just making sure I'm hearing you correctly.
Yes. It is your turn.
Yeah, great. Thank you for your presentation. I, you know, tonight, they recalled a bunch of item object codes to come back and make more modifications and cuts, and so I worry that that could happen with you guys as well. You know, it, it seems like the, the need to cut because of the urgency and concerns of the tax burden and increase. So if there was to be a cut tonight, where could you, what could you do? What could you live with?
I'll, you know, listen, I, you're asking me to identify where we have some, some Our overtime budget has, we haven't increased that. There's, you know, I'm asking you for, for what I thought we needed under this budget. If there's, if the council in its wisdom feels that there needs to be some adjustments made, I'll, I'll leave that to your, you know, decisions.
Yeah, I'm just not saying it, it does. I'm just, continuing with the mantra of the big cuts, as I was not in favor of some of the other cuts that just came before us, like police infrastructure for cars and stuff like that. So I voted down that for the city. So my concern, though, is if something needs to be cut, like where, where can you, I think other folks got cut, and I'm sure they didn't want to cut either. So I'm just interested to see if there's a percent, you know, I can't tell you where to spend the money within the object codes, but if there's a number or a percent increase that, you know, would be feasible.
I'd submit two things for your consideration. Number one, the proposal that we came in here was, was a smaller percentage than our partner agencies. We've also received a cut prior to walking in this room from the town manager. Again, if, if there are some things that you feel that you need to do, I certainly understand that, but, but we've provided you with, I think, is a budget that provides the services that the town and our elected bodies has asked us to do. And, and, you know, we didn't forward the recommendation for an accreditation manager because I just wanted to have somebody else walking around the building, it's because it's a position that we need. So, you know, and I, I respect what you're asking, I, if, you know, I would just submit to you that, at the end of the day, we look at the bottom line. You know, there's, there's not one thing I can say this is more important than that if it's a decision that's made by the council that says, hey, we have to do this. Again, in the interest of parity, there, I didn't submit new projects, I didn't submit things that haven't been done in the past, I submitted things that have long been a goal of, of the town as a whole, not just the police department.
Thank you. You know, I think everyone else spoke pretty diligently about their budget, too, and also felt that they're proposing a very strong budget that has no fat either, and, and I definitely wasn't in support of some of these cuts and some of these renegotiated cuts. But I, I think, you know, the fair question, like we asked the library, where, where can you, you know, if you had to, I mean, in a perfect world, it'd be great to give everyone exactly what they asked for, but other, other item lines are being asked to make cuts, and so it's just kind of one of the things of, you know, if it had to happen, where could it happen? What, what is the livable percent that could work? If you're saying the number you have is all, that's, you know, I can respect that. But I just think, you know, I, there's a chance it could be brought back to the table, like the other ones that just happened tonight, if the cut doesn't come out the way that people want, that it could be brought back to the table again, so.
Point of order. Point of order. What is your point of order?
Just want to see-
Decorum, please. And specifically in decorum, what are you asking for?
Yeah, because I'm confused.
What Counselor Borderline is discussing is saying that we are changing our minds flippantly, basically, and I don't appreciate the ways that she's discussing this.
Thank you. Counselor Borderline, would you please stay on the topic of the police budget? Thank you.
Yeah, I am, and we renegotiated a lot of object lines, so that needs to be discussed. It's not, it was in signed intent, which was not the, the intention. So my concern is if we don't make the proper cuts now, people can bring it back forward to be negotiated. That's fact, that happened tonight. So my, my concern, I was not in support of the cuts and the fact that people had to come back around the table, so I'm trying to protect and say, you know, what, what are, what are the areas?
No, I, I respect the will-
It is fair to say that the other, I'm sorry?
I, I thought you were done, I'm sorry.
No. It is fair to say that the other folks weren't expecting those cuts either, and some weren't even present for the cuts. So, and I voted no against those cuts.
Point of order.
Your point of order.
The, the other cuts are not on the agenda topic at hand.
You're correct. I have asked Counselor Borderline to stay on topic.
I'm on topic, because it was brought up before.
Can you please stay on the topic of 1024, which is the town police department budget?
Yeah, we're talking about it.
Am I to respond, or?
Counselor Borderline, would you like to continue?
No, he can respond. Go ahead.
I, I respect the will of the council, and certainly if the council sees fit to, to talk to me again or other, you know, that's, I, I respect your will to do that, and I'd certainly respond to it. Again, I, you know, we forwarded a budget here that exclusively is funding from the town. We don't have any other revenue that we utilize to augment our budget when it comes to other tax dollars, you know, aside from the typical grants and other things. We get our funding completely from the town. So again, if the council sees fit, that they, they feel it necessary to levy a cut, then we'll make adjustments as the year goes along and figure out where that is, to identify a line item, or a process, or a person, or an, I, I just don't have that, I don't have that answer for you. I, I do respect where you're at, I understand what you're doing, and I know that you, you have a huge responsibility to the taxpayers of this town, and want to make sure you carry it forward in a responsible, equitable, and reasonable manner. I do respect that. I, if, it sounds like that, that the department heads and my colleagues are going to be asked here to, to do that Sophie's Choice, like I had mentioned before, and it's tough for us to do that. We present you with a budget, we put a lot of time and energy and work into it, you know, we give you what we feel is necessary to run the operations of our agencies and our departments. If you feel that it's necessary to do other things, that's your prerogative, and I respect that. Do I want that? No, I don't think anybody who sits here does, wants that. But as far as us making it easy to say, oh, cut this, we wouldn't have put that in the budget if we felt it was frivolous. At least I wouldn't have. I wouldn't have put things in there, I wouldn't have told you, you need to buy things that we don't need. I wouldn't tell you to fund programs that I don't think are best for the town of Groton. I, I tell you what I think is important, and what I've heard from this council, the RTM for the last, going on nine years, that's what I, I work towards, and I try to make sure I'm responsive to what you want from your police department and what we need for the town.
Thanks. You know, I agree, I'm not asking you to, I, you know, single out in any individual item, just in general. Some folks have just said, you know, I want this percent, but if I had to, if I got, you know, if I came in at 4.5, if I got a four, I could work with that. But I thank you for your responses, and, you know, we'll see what happens here tonight. Thank you.
Point of information?
Your point of information.
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. On page 106, your patrol officers are going from 45 to 46. I just want to confirm that that is your accreditation manager?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, I don't see any more questions, so thank you for coming, and we're going to take a vote on this now. $10,671,815, Counselor Parker. Abstain.